That's what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, you'd see it there.
I'm just surprised I don't see any yet because we have had several people sign up.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Uh, this is the West Hartford Public Schools Board of
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thank you. As a reminder to, um, board members, if you have questions during the meeting, to just put a question mark in the chat box. Um, we do not have a revision to the agenda order, but I do have a statement that I wish to read this evening. Before we move to public comment, I want to take the opportunity to speak to those who are watching us this evening. We've just had an election. For those of you who ran for office, or helped get people registered to vote, or called or texted people here in West Hartford, or across Connecticut, or in other states, or worked or volunteered at a polling location, or made your wishes known by voting, you've invested yourself in the election and in the future of our state and our country. The outcomes of the election are still uncertain. We don't know what's next for our country after January 20th. And I know we all feel unsettled tonight, but it will be okay. Now, the next step in participating in our democracy is advocating. We know there's a petition going around about our schools right now. We also receive emails on a regular basis about a variety of different issues related to our schools. And we have public comment at all of our board meetings. This advocacy makes us proud. It means that our schools are helping our students and families learn how to have an impact. We will not be responding to any of the public comment this evening. That is our policy. However, please know that we will listen carefully. We also, later on tonight, or shortly thereafter, may address some of the issues that you bring forward. I know it can feel discouraging to not know immediately whether your advocacy has mattered. It does matter. We will not all always agree, but your feedback helps us continuously evaluate and improve our schools. But it's like the election. Some issues can be resolved quickly, and others take time, teamwork, and patience. Thank you for working with us in support of West Hartford's students and families. And now we will move to public comment. Uh, as a reminder, when you provide public comment, please start with your name and address. And you will have three minutes, three minutes to speak, and I will let you know when your, um, time has gone. So I will call you out in the order that you've signed up on our signup sheet. We're limited to seven speakers per topic. And I think we should be fine based on, um, who has signed up this evening. Uh, first, we have David Mingaleli. David, are you here? If so, you can unmute by pushing star six. Okay, no, David. We will move to Diana McGovern. Diana, are you here in the meeting and ready to speak? Okay, uh, next to Catherine Davis. Catherine, are you here in the meeting? You're here. Push star six to unmute yourself. All right, Melanie Farinello.
We are here.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Uh, so if you could start with your name and address.
Mm-hmm. My name is Scott Farinello. Uh, I'm husband of Melanie Farinello. Uh, we live at fifty-seven Quaker Lane South in West Hartford, Connecticut. Zero six one one nine.
Thank you. You can go ahead and get started.
Thank you. My name is Scott Farinello, and I live in West Hartford, and I have a fourth grade son in remote learning whose homeschool is bugby. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share these public comments. The asynchronous learning offered for remote learning, I feel is not enough. My son is usually done with all his assigned work within fifteen minutes or so. I've asked for additional learning opportunities, such as in the spring, when they've had links for science and social studies and more, and was told that they're considering adding them, but so far it's still minimal. The RLE students should be receiving the same level of work and be able to keep pace with the in-school students. Some families did not have a choice to send their kids back to in-person because of being high-risk, and were reassured equity in learning opportunities despite the different format. I'm hoping that more robust learning opportunities can be added to engage students in remote learning for a longer and more substantial day. Also, RLE needs to hire more substitutes because when his teacher was out, they had no synchronous learning that day because RLE's one substitute was already covering a different class. I referred a former teacher to contact RLE HR and was told that they're not hiring. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron Brancato.
Hello.
Hi. You're up. If you can start with your name and address.
Um, I'm Aaron Brancato. I live on Auburn Road, and I'm a senior at Hall.
Thank you. All right, you can go ahead and get started.
Um, as some of you may have seen, I started a petition that went around starting on Saturday evening. This grew way faster than anticipated and received nearly twenty-five hundred signatures and comments from both students and parents across the district. It was actually the mom of one of my peers who suggested I attend this meeting and make my voice heard. I'm grateful to all of you that I have the opportunity to do exactly that. I do respect the time and effort it's taking to come up with the scheduling and planning for this school year, and I can only imagine the added stress during this time. It is, however, necessary to remember that we are all going through this as well, which means it would be productive and widely beneficial to work together as a community. A student from K O reached out to me and said they'd switched from sixty-minute classes to seventy-five minutes. Students and teachers are mentally checked out around the hour mark, and they don't get sufficient break time. Students end up exhausted at the end of the day, and their levels of anxiety and depression have skyrocketed unlike their motivation. Additionally, teachers are having trouble adjusting to teaching what are essentially two classes at once. Another student from Conder Hall noted that freshmen specifically are just starting high school, and she pointed out that the amount of work and schedule changes feel overwhelming. She is also one of many students struggling with ADD, which is my next point. It is already difficult for people to watch half-hour virtual classes, so extending that time by thirty-five plus more minutes four times in a row would not help them learn more. When I asked about these circumstances in a student faculty meeting on Monday, the answer given by the administration was that this school day is still shorter than normal. While this is true, no current high school or middle schooler is used to seventy-five-plus-minute periods. Past decisions cannot be rectified, but future ones can. For many students, it feels as though we've spent months building something up just for it to be knocked back down. Of course, resilience is a crucial quality in life, but in such a, but such a change in this moment in the middle of a school week would not benefit people my age. Communication and computer and community input are key during this time. We, including myself, fully understand and agree with the need for more instructional hours. It is worth taking the time to gather community opinions on a possible schedule change, even if it takes a few extra weeks. While we acknowledge that no one has a concrete solution yet, we ask that you reconsider such a sudden change in schedule. In terms of planning, it would make more sense to maintain the current schedule, at least until the end of semester one. A possible change for the present time could be to have teachers record classes and post them on Google Classroom for students to view again on their own time. This would add a positive change for everyone while reducing the current stress all students are facing. Between now and December or January, surveys can be sent out and meetings held between administration, students, and parents to figure out a solid plan for the next semester. I, as well as countless other students and parents, would be thrilled to have the opportunity to work with all of you on a schedule that meets state guidelines while also benefiting the most people as possible. Again, I appreciate this opportunity, and I hope that we can all improve the schedule as a group with feedback from all perspectives. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you. Next, we have Tao. Tao Ho, are you on? If not, we'll move to Heather Walsh.
I'm at fifty-two, Richard Road, West Hartford, Connecticut.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm actually calling with a very positive experience. My son is in third grade, and he's with a remote learning elementary school. His homeschool is Duffy. Um, I just wanted to say that I think Harry Jones and the staff at the school are doing an amazing job, and we've had, um, nothing but positive experience with everything. His teacher Cathy Davis has been incredible. He's learning a lot. We've had no tech issues. Um, you know, he's super engaged. There's no, like, distractions. Um, I've been fortunate enough to be home with him. Um, so I just wanted to call and say something positive that, you know, I'm celebrating things that are working.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will, oh, thank you. I will just go back up. Sure. I'm just gonna go back up to the top to see if any of the other folks who had signed up have joined in. Um, is David Mingaleli on the call? Diana McGovern? Or Catherine Davis? Okay. Uh, thank you. Is there anybody else who has dialed in but did not sign up? All right. We're going to move on then to item three, election of officers and board organization. Uh, just read the background for those of you who aren't looking at the agenda. Pursuant to section ten to eighteen of the state statutes, uh, chapter two, section four of the town charter, and section eighty-one thirty of the West Hartford School Code Policy, the Board of Education should at this meeting elect a chair, vice chair, secretary, and two financial examiners, such persons to hold office for a period of one year. It is recommended that the election be conducted in accordance with the following procedure. Um, the following recommendation is, uh, that Tom Moore act as temporary chairperson of this meeting for the purpose of electing a chairperson for the Board of Education. Uh, Tom, you're up.
All right. I didn't know if there had to be a, no, you're right. Um, okay, the meeting will please come to order. Nominations are now in order for the office of chairperson. Um, do I have any nominations?
I move to nominate Deb Pollan to remain as chairperson.
Okay. Are there further nominations? Nominations don't actually require a second. I do remember that. Um, are there further nominations for the office of chairperson? If not, nominations are closed. So, we will have a vote. Um, those in favor of Deb Pollan for chairperson, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. So Deb, congratulations, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you for your support. And I'm really looking forward to, um, working with all of you and our students and faculty, administration, our families across town this year. I will now call for nominations, uh, for the election of our vice chairperson. Um, is there a motion for the nomination for vice chairperson?
Hi, I'm Andy Aronson. I'd like to nominate Dr. Lorna Thomas-Farkason to continue on as vice chair.
And are there other nominations? If not, I will try your minds. All those in favor of Dr. Lorna Thomas-Farkason serving as vice chair, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Lorna. And now I am seeking nominations for the office of secretary. Are there any nominations for the office of secretary?
Yes, I, Lorna Thomas-Farkason nominate Amanda Aronson to continue in her role as secretary of the West Hartford Board of Education.
And are there any other nominations for secretary? If not, I will try your minds. All those in favor of Amanda Aronson continuing as secretary, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it again. And now we are seeking a nomination for a financial examiner from the Republican Party. Do I have a nomination?
Yes. I, Liz Wilcox, would like to nominate Mark Zidanowitz for the position of financial examiner.
And are there other nominations? If not, I'll try your minds. All those in favor of Mark Zidanowitz as financial examiner, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it. And finally, um, seeking a motion for a financial examiner from the Democratic side. Uh, do I have any motions? Anyone?
I'll nominate Deb Pollan, Mark Stanwyck.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, great. Um, all those in favor of, uh, me continuing on as financial examiner, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Thanks for your willingness to serve. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And item A is the appropriation of unexpended education funds account to the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget. And I'm seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt a revised twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget of a hundred seventy-two million, three seventy-three, five twenty-eight by appropriating funds available in the unexpended education funds account. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Ari Steinberg.
Thank you, Ari. Any seconds?
Second, Lorna Thomas-Farkason.
Thank you. And discussion. Um, Liz, do you want to just give us a brief summary of this?
Certainly.
Thank you.
As you may recall, during the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget process, uh, the Board of Ed proposed and the town council adopted a resolution, um, enacting a non-lapsing unexpended education funds account. Um, we had anticipated that we would be able to put one-point-five million into this account from fiscal year twenty surplus and use those funds for transportation. As you recall, when we went over our results from fiscal twenty, we had significant savings primarily from renegotiating our bus contracts when schools were closed due to the pandemic. Um, so as part of the adopted budget, we had reduced the budget in anticipation of appropriating these funds. In addition, uh, we were able to save an additional eight-hundred thousand, uh, last year due to savings in substitute pay as well as out-of-district placements. And so this resolution also proposes utilizing that savings and allocating it in the twenty-twenty-one budget to address professional services, to pay for the CNAs that we have at each school, uh, custodial supplies as we're experiencing overages in cleaning and sanitizing of schools, and then computer equipment as we continue to address ongoing technology needs as we operate in both remote learning environment and a hybrid mode. So what we would do is ask that you, um, approve this resolution, and the general fund budget for the current school year will be increased by two-point-three-one.
Great. Are there questions from board members? Okay. Um, if not, I'll try your minds. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. We will move to staff communications and reports and on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, this is the Liz Hewitt meeting, because she, she presents in a minute on our October first enrollments also. Um, and I do just want to say, in regard to that last presentation, my thanks to Liz, um, for keeping us on track with budget, which will come up again as we do a financial examiner's meeting. And, um, I, I do want to let it, you know, one of the key things that people, I don't know. We don't talk about money a lot because just do whatever you can, do whatever you can, but trying to keep everything balanced, trying to keep everything going, um, while contact tracing and everything else, and Liz finds time for me and Andy to meet with her, which typically we've had a set meeting, and instead now Liz is far more uh, willing to come in at different times and meet with Andy and I when we can, um, we can find time to get together to figure out how we're gonna pay for everything. So, um, I just wanted to thank Liz for all of her work with that. Um, speaking of the pandemic, uh, last week, I had a message with two key components. One, and I want to talk about a conversation Matthew Carter, the state epidemiologist, had in our weekly call with the Department of Public Health. Um, yesterday, that was reiterated to me, um, not just from the Department of Education, but, um, to all of us as superintendents, that the state's goal, um, stated goal from here forward is to, the, the number one priority is to keep our schools open and operating during this pandemic. That, um, you know, I alluded to a lot of articles that have come out and things that have talked about the, the, um, notion of schools not being super-spreaders. Um, and I think it's really, um, important that we know that that's our baseline, because everything comes from this point of wanting to keep our kids in. And, um, you know, that leads to this kind of discussion about, um, that, that kids reached out and they did, they were great reaching out about, um, their feelings about hybrid two-point-oh. And anytime people want to talk about process during the pandemic, and Paul will talk specifically about things that we have done with process, I, I can just say right now, if you're going to critique process from during the summer till now, guilty as charged. It, it just will not be the process that we would do in normal times. We would not move to block scheduling without a full year-long study. Instead, we just say we have to do it. We wouldn't make shifts to webcams in every classroom without months and months of preparation. But we just have to do these things right now. And there's a couple pressures that I'll get to with that. But one thing to talk about with the pandemic, a unique pressure across the state, and I want to give Andy credit and also our nurses and our principals and our board of health, um, West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. Contact tracing is gonna be the most difficult part of keeping schools open in a lot of ways. I mean, obviously, the keeping people separate, but just the, the work hours that go into contact tracing each event. We had one, um, one go up with, that'll put thirty-two people in quarantine. You have to track down all of those thirty-two people and go through and communicate with them either after school or over a weekend. So I want to publicly thank our people, because as you know, we have not missed a day of school yet. And, um, that puts us in, um, pretty rare, um, status that we've been able to do this and, um, not have it, um, not have it get in the way of school. Um, so we will maintain, we'll look at our numbers, but I, I should let people know that the guidance from the Department of Public Health is keep your kids in school. That, that right now is the guidance. Mitigation strategies, the chief one being at the upper levels distancing, at the lower levels cohorting. But that is the priority. That's why the state has said they're moving to this kind of their own two-point-oh, um, with, um, with the rollbacks. Because the other thing that I can tell you all is coming is we're, we're in orange, we're going to be in red also. Um, and the town and school, red status will be different. The town flags it at fifteen cases. For ten thousand for the schools, it's twenty-five cases. Um, not in the schools again, in the community. But, um, last week in the community, um, I think we had ninety cases. So we're at, um, you know, we're at, or high eighties anyway. Right, Andy, ninety, right? I'm pretty sure. Um, so, you know, those rolling averages we move forward, um, will certainly impact us. We're not gonna put people at undue risk if we do see spread in buildings, either here or in other places. That, that could affect some of our decision-making processes, but, um, you know, that kind of segues into hybrid two-point-oh and as to why. I, I know that there's a feeling out there, why would you mess with something that's working so well? And I did write a long response, um, to a lot of students, and I know both Dana and Giulio included that in their letter to send out. Um, it, it's not perfect, what we've been doing. I can tell you that. We run our DNF list, and we run our disengage list, and we run with how are we keeping kids in, um, and that's one element. Everybody on the board knows, just as we've had callers say, and a petition saying, why would you change this, that we've had a board meeting where every caller attacked our hybrid plan and said, why won't you do this? And that's kind of just a parallel that I realize is going to happen this year, that no matter a decision, we're going to have two opposite sides. And I do want to say to people, there's a difference between not agreeing and not listening. Um, and that's something that I think is really important, and I, I especially think there's an element of, you know, I, I think there's a devotion to decency that I want to have with people, with how we talk to each other. And I understand that, um, listening and salient points and some really good, um, pieces. And Paul's gonna talk about how he's met with kids and with teachers through this process, because this wasn't really new. We've talked about this for five weeks now from a board meeting. And the other piece of it is, um, people are saying, why is it going so slowly? Why isn't this happening faster? And it's because there were so many steps to roll out. We can't just develop a plan and say, okay, everybody do this, because we have to match it with our unions and our contracts. We have to match teachers from different buildings with a schedule. We have the pressure of lunches right now unlike any other time where I, I, I mean, we're rolling back restaurants to fifty percent capacity, but we're gonna have waves of three-hundred-and-fifty kids eating in a cafeteria, because in the high schools, it, it just, which is why one of the- which is why one of the significant pressures that we're operating under is that a dismissal for a lunch period, grab and go with lunch. And you know, the one thing I would say about that, because there's people, why is it so late? At the high school and at the middle school, it basically correlates with where your lunch would have been if you had had last period lunch. And in addition, with our schedules this year, their students are far more likely to have a study hall and a free period than they would have had in previous years. Just because lunch was a period previously and now it's not anymore. So those are kind of the structural things, but I know Paul has information to share about how it's been rolled out. And you know, I want to thank Paul because he has taken the time to meet with not just teachers throughout this process as we built this, because believe me, there's been about eight different iterations of this. And for everybody that doesn't like it, I can tell you, you should have seen the other seven. But you know, not just meeting with teachers, but also meeting with focus groups of students. So Mr. Byssinus?
Before we go to Paul, you mentioned an acronym, DNF?
Oh, literally a D and an F. A D and an F list. We run, we run it.
So students are getting Ds or Fs.
Yeah, yeah, we run at regular intervals, all of our students that have at least one D or F. We try to look at it by race. We try to look at it by where they're coming from. Then we can match it to attendance list, we can match it to students list, see how basically so they don't get lost. So somebody's reaching out and talking to them. And it's been really effective to run that. And once we do, we mandate somebody makes contact with them. Could be a teacher, but if it's multiple Ds or Fs, it's going to be an assistant principal or the principal having a discussion with the student. But what's going on? How can we help? So Paul?
Thanks, Tom. I'm going to share my screen and just give a quick visual to our hybrid 2.0 plan. And just allows me some notes to walk myself through. So as Tom mentioned, there have been several iterations of the plan and we began talking about this with you as the board and with the community publicly. I believe it was about a month ago, two, two board meetings back when, and we did receive a number of community comments that evening that were, that were really asking about and looking for increased instructional time with our at-home learners. It was something that we kind of showed our cards at that point a little bit early and said that we had been looking at a 2.0 plan. And we were really, one of the decision points that we were waiting on was whether or not our school, specifically our secondary schools, would be moving into full in-person attendance or whether or not they would remain in hybrid. And once we knew that we were remaining in hybrid, we kind of began to focus our efforts more specifically to improving our hybrid based on what we had learned up through that point, which was pretty much the end of September at that time. So the major design principles in our improvement planning were these four. And it was really, as Tom talks about the different iterations or the different versions of the plan. It was just different things that we were doing to achieve these goals, to increase the instructional minutes. Not only for the remote learners, that was definitely the piece that we heard a lot of feedback about that we had ourselves. But also we got feedback that in general, secondary schools, we were looking to increase the instructional minutes for in person. Clearly recognizing that currently our high school students have the privilege of being released at 11:25 a.m. when on a typical year, they would be in school until 2:15. We clearly had identified the use of streaming live instruction as a mechanism to maintain tighter alignment between the groups. Also as a mechanism to provide for the additional instructional time for those at-home learners. But as you know, as a board, one of the things that we talked about in the past was streaming alone, we did not feel was a good model for, for our at-home learners. And that is the model that a number of districts have been using since the onset. It's one of the things that's distinguished us. And so we did want to make sure that we maintained the assured opportunities to provide direct instruction to our at-home learners through afternoon classes. Because we definitely feel that that mitigates the limitations of streaming alone, mitigates the notion that if I'm only streaming, I potentially could lose the ability for that active engagement of the at-home learner. And we need the opportunity to engage with our at-home learners to make certain that we can check for their understanding. So that's, that's a piece of our plan. And then lastly, within any of our improvement, we wanted to build on our strengths. And we think that the risk mitigation factors that we've been able to achieve through block scheduling, through the wearing of masks, through the longer passing times, through some of the traffic patterns that are established in the buildings and all of those other things have done a significant job to reduce, if not eliminate, spread of the, of the virus within our schools. And as you've heard before, we generally see that the virus is coming into the buildings through familial or community spread, which is to be expected. It's nothing to be scared of or ashamed of. It's, it's just, that's what, that's how it's going to happen. And our job is to avoid the schools becoming a spreader and certainly to avoid them becoming a super spreader. And I think I compliment Andy Morrow and the whole team in the buildings. They've done a phenomenal job with that. So what did we do? What did we change? In, in terms of this, and you'll see, I'll probably just highlight from one column. You'll see that the changes in the high school and in the middle school are very, very parallel. The first thing that we did was increased our instructional box to approximately 75 minutes. That's approximately 15 minutes longer per class period each of the day. So, so it elongates the day by about an hour or so and brings us till 1:00 p.m. as a release time at the high school. Brings us to 1:30 p.m. as a release time in the middle school. It's not a significant increase in time, so we do feel that the students that have been attending during the day can certainly, can certainly attend in terms of their attention span. We're very confident that the teachers can make a very significant positive use of that additional 15 minutes. That really brings them closer, when you think about the block schedule, that really brings them significantly closer to the amount of instructional time that they would typically have for two periods, which is what, which is what we need to make up for in terms of our shift from an eight-period day to a block schedule. One of the things that we did in order to achieve that longer school period was we had to reduce the number of dedicated class periods with at-home learners. So that's the last bullet in the list. We go from having essentially twice weekly dedicated afternoon periods to once weekly. And that change that I'll talk a little more about, that's the change that drives us then in terms of how we're going to be able to schedule those afternoon periods in terms of what classes would meet, made us go to a static A, B, C, D rotation or A, B rotation within our block schedules. So basically what this means is we had, the schedules would rotate. There's obviously five days in the week. We had a four-day rotation at the high school, a two-day rotation at the middle school, where you'd alternate your days in terms of the classes that you saw. That now becomes very static, very easy to anticipate. Monday is always the A day, so I get all of my A day classes. Tuesday is always the B day, Thursday and Friday respectively. And Wednesday becomes the only day that classes become rotated so that, so that will provide a schedule for students so they know where to go on Wednesdays. We did increase, we did introduce, or we will introduce live streaming of instruction. And the biggest thing we're trying to make sure that people understand, I want to take some time with this, is that our live streaming is flexible. That's not to say that we're streaming the full 75 minutes every single day, every single class. In fact, our teachers are being asked to start slowly, let the students get used to it. And once they're used to it, as well as teachers, they're asked to be smart about how they're streaming. We're giving them professional learning on three to four different, actually on four specifically, different instructional models and saying, you know, really based on what you're trying to achieve and how you're going to divide time up, let's figure out how much streaming makes sense in that particular day. And on certain days where there's opportunity for, whether it's student independent practice or additional research or something like that, students may log off after a shorter amount of time. On other days, perhaps when there are student presentations or kind of ongoing debate back and forth and and greater collaboration among students, that might be the day where students are asked to stream in for a longer period of the time. And it will take on various shapes and sizes based on the content area, based on the teacher and based on the particular lesson and the learning objectives of that day. So that is the PD that teachers are engaged in currently. It is the basis of their professional learning, a significant chunk of their professional learning for the remainder of the year. Things, other things that we maintained, we maintained our advisory blocks, which are daily in the middle school, the community blocks, which are weekly in the high schools. And we maintained, as I referenced earlier, although reduced, weekly dedicated class periods with the at-home remote learners. And so you'll see in the sample schedule in a moment, two opportunities per day for, and I shouldn't call them opportunities, I should call them class periods, mandated scheduled class periods for our at-home learners. So that we can have that small group instructional period where we can really check their understanding, really make sure that they got their questions answered as we really kind of move into this blended environment where we have a portion of our class that's in person and a portion of our class that is remote.
Paul, if I could with one thing before you leave the streaming portion, so I do want people to understand this in flexibility with what's going to happen. But I have had questions, well, can't it be optional for students? And that's actually, we met with the State Department of Education last week about not just tracking students' absences. And we'll talk about that, I'll talk about that more when I talk about October 1st numbers. But about our own instructional minutes time. So the state is looking for schools to increase the instructional minutes per year. And they're very, while they understand asynchronous learning, there is a seat time requirement of 900 minutes that is not off the books in Connecticut. There was an exception made last year, but that exception hasn't been made yet this year. So that, that's a piece that, you know, we had a long conversation with two different representatives from the state last Thursday. Myself, Andy, Paul and Gretchen met with them because there's not just pressures on our, on all students, but it's also our special education students. And by law, we have to provide hours of instruction to those students also. And the asynchronous versus synchronous piece also plays a role in that. So we can't decide not to take attendance in those classes. That, that would, we'd be violating state regulations.
And I'll piggyback one short comment and then I'll, I'll wrap this up quickly so we can get to discussion. But Tom's being humble because when we were done with our meeting with the state, one of the things they were impressed about that did distinguish West Hartford from other districts was our attention to the at-home learners by providing direct instruction to them. And they, they said, you know, this is a model that, that other districts should look at and asked if we'd be willing to share. I'll give you a glance at what the, what the daily schedule looks like for students. It's, you know, it's pretty parallel, pretty similar, whether it's middle school or high school, obviously we have different start times at the schools. As I mentioned, the same traditional start time that, that exists in the building would, would remain. We would extend out the in-person attendance to 1 o'clock at the high school, 1:30 at the middle schools. We provide opportunities for snack during the day, whether that just be an on-demand stack at the high school or something that's built into the advisory period at the middle school. And then we release the students by 1:30 with the grab and go lunch and dismissal. And then you can see there at the bottom, the two 25-minute roughly periods, we would have loved, you know, one of the goals, could we make those longer, but it's a tug of war with the time schedule. We couldn't provide for that longer school day, kind of what we heard feedback from the community in terms of bringing it closer to what, what it traditionally is in terms of the instructional minutes and not have a little give on the other, on the backend. So it's relatively unchanged at the middle schools. It's slightly less than it was at the high schools. But it's fixed. On a Monday, I would see my block one and block two A day classes. On a Tuesday, I would see Tuesday being a B day, I would see my block one and block two B day classes. And then on Thursday and Friday, I would see blocks three and four respectively. So we expect that while we have just the one contact period per week instead of the two, we certainly expect that the students' participation in streaming and their ability to ask questions during live instruction will more than make up for line at a time, but we do feel that that's an important kind of component. Just to let you know where things are, we're planning to move forward with this on the 11th of November. We have had a number of optional professional development, drop-in professional development available for teachers that really just supplements their professional learning that they've received thus far relative to block scheduling. We wanted to make sure that we could kind of have a lot of opportunities leading up, not just waiting on the once weekly. And because we're moving into parent conference season, we have, we have parent conference prep, so we have some interruption. So we created multiple drop-in opportunities for teachers and we're creating an assured professional learning. On Monday, November the 9th, we will suspend the afternoon classes that day so that we can guarantee that we've been able to touch every single teacher in the district at the secondary level that needs to provide this instruction and make sure that they've had at least an introduction to, if not an advanced training on those instructional models, know how to operate their webcams, have the opportunity to collaborate with your peers on what those first three days will look like. Some final notes. The changes that we've made are definitely guided by those fundamental principles that I outlined as well as feedback that we heard from the community. We heard that very, very clearly two meetings ago. It's guided by feedback from our teachers because after that meeting, once we had had some of our thinking out there in the public, we had, we shared the full plan, the full sort of draft plan with our extended leadership, asked them to, to share some of that out with their teachers. I got pages of feedback from them. We've had ongoing meetings, I've had ongoing meetings with the scheduling committee and the WHEA. And most recently just had a student focus group where I got a very insightful, tremendous feedback from students that I was, I was very pleased to get because it was constructive and talked about the things that students found beneficial and things that they were, was really on their mind, that they were worried about more so than, you know, you know, more so than the typical kinds of waking up and things like that. We are providing time for teachers and students and asking them, take time to learn this new routine. You know, we're starting it on a Wednesday intentionally so that it started in a short week. And, and you know, for some of our classes, especially our ninth grade classes or our sixth grade classes, it may be the first time that the red cohort and the blue cohort, you know, get to know each other. There may be students who are not acquainted. And so we want to make sure that we establish the right climate. We are asking teachers to make it something that students can, you know, be able to predict with some consistency. So we're asking them to have all live streaming start at the beginning of a class period. And then if they're going to, you know, have an abbreviated streaming period, you know, cut it off where it makes sense. The duration of streaming will, will vary based on the goals for the teacher. And we're really telling teachers, don't, don't stream every single minute of every single class. You know, that's probably a little bit passive for our learners that are at home. You know, do it where it makes sense. Tom, I already mentioned, attendance is expected. This includes our afternoon classes. And we will need to, based on our shared staffing model, we will need to make the parallel change in the, in the schedule and the bell schedule for the remote middle school and the remote high school. So that is kind of the big overview and I'd be happy to shut off the sharing and entertain any questions or discussion.
Great, thank you. I know Mark has a question and just a reminder, if other board members, including Lily and Rochelle, if you have questions, you can. you can question Mark in the chat box. All right, so Mark, and then Liz, you'll be next.
All right, thanks. I don't know, Paul or Tom, but Tom, you had mentioned that the increased instruction per year with 900 minutes of seat time in the Connecticut's increasing that. Is that because of we're online? COVID, they want more instruction on time? Or is that something that has existed previously and they're increasing that number?
I might have misspoke. 900 hours a year of instruction is the standard that's always been in case. Last year, they suspended it for a portion of the year. And this year, it's been kind of in limbo. But I think it's one of the levers as the State Department of Education wants schools that aren't in to come back to school. And I think it's one of the levers that they're using. And because people do report out one district or another district. And so they're, they're doing surveys now and meeting with different districts. But Paul was correct, they did say this would be a model. And would we be willing to present this plan to other districts? You know, it's just trying to take the best of both things. One thing I think is important, Mark, is that people might not understand also is when you take our previous lunch period, so we've always had 45-minute lunches at the high school because it's kind of that eight-period day. And then you take the fact that we have eight periods. And so there's a four-minute passing time between each of those periods. So you eliminate half of those. So that's basically 16 minutes. And then you eliminate the lunch period of 45 minutes. Now you're basically at an hour that's missing. So we're just short 15 minutes now of what a typical year would be in terms of instructional minutes during that time. Now again, it has to be flexible. We're not saying kids will be on the computer the entire time when they're there. We know there's difference between being at home and being in the classroom. We understand that, we expect teachers to work with that. And I think one of the concerns teachers that students had asked about is that will this mean there'd be extra homework? Actually, Paul and I were talking about, I would anticipate there may be a little less homework because it's not, you know, there's that classwork time now that may increase. So I hope that answers the question about the 900 hours.
Yeah, thank you. I just, it does, I just wanted people at home too to understand when we did, when we go into this, why, why we're doing it and getting more instructional time with the kids.
Thank you. Liz?
Oh yeah, first off, thanks for the presentation. Really helpful to understand. I just wanted to say I'm fully in support of making this switch. And I think it's really necessary and important for us, like to provide a quality education. My question was just more like, more of a procedural question. I'm just wondering, when we're giving tests or quizzes, how is that going to work? Is that going, are the kids who are at home, are they going to be taking the quizzes at the same time as the in-school?
That's a great question, Liz. And I would imagine that there are probably 10 different variations. So I'll, I'll throw a couple of scenarios at you. First, there, there is an ability through Google Classroom and Google Forms to be able to give, to be able to get, to give some assessments online that, that kind of happened digitally. You are a little bit restricted in terms of, you know, it's like a short answer or multiple choice type setting. You, you also have the ability to, depending on how your timing, some quizzes or assessments to be able to say give, especially if you're giving something that might be on the Friday right before the cohort switches, and then give a test on a Monday if you're very concerned and you want to avoid the online opportunity, that you can just time that out a little bit differently in that regard. I know a lot of our teachers are looking at, looking at assessment and have, and this really has caused them to look at assessment in a different way, similar to what the college board did, where if, if I'm worried about students, you know, accessing their notes, maybe I just take that out of the equation. And the assessment that I'm going to provide, I'm going to recognize that students may have their notes. And I just make sure that I'm constructing my questions and what I'm valuing and all the rest in that direction. So there, you know, there could be other things where I've moved in, especially in some of the humanities or even in the sciences to a degree, where I move that assessment away from just a, an assessment of pure content into something where they have to demonstrate their understanding through, you know, whether that's through a paper or through some more kind of descriptive measure of their understanding or application of that learning. So, so I think it, I think the pandemic in general and the conditions that we're providing instruction under are requiring our teachers to think differently about assessment. But, but there, there's just a whole variety of ways in which they can address that.
Liz, do you have any follow-ups or anything?
Thank you, Paul.
Other questions? Jason?
Hi. So one of the things I was thinking about that was raised from Mr. Brancato's comments earlier in the meeting was, you know, he suggested a possibility of recording the streaming session. And what came to mind is issues of privacy. And I don't know if that factors into the, the possible options. But, you know, I know there's difference between streaming and recording. Is that part of your, I see some heads nodding. So just wanted to raise that to, just to air that.
It's, it's a, it's a hornet's nest in so many different ways. There's districts that have had major grievances from their teachers where they've said, you have to record every session that you're putting out there so that kids can make it available. There's issues with attendance where how are you monitoring attendance? And there are some privacy issues, although those have tended, the State Department of Education has been a little more lenient on that with this. But that is something where it's, it's individual pieces. We still value asynchronous learning with this. And there may be snippets, but it can't just be kind of, I'm going to record the class and you can watch it when you want to because we really want you to be an involved part of the class. This isn't, we don't want this to be watching school. If that's what it's going to be, we don't want to do it, you know?
Yeah, I want to piggyback on that. And I think Tom just kind of hit the nail on the head with, we're really moving from a model where teachers were asked, you know, one of the strategies we were, we were hoping on and relying on was that in our other model where, where our at-home learners really only had those two opportunities, two half-hour sessions per week to get their instruction, that the teacher would flip the classroom and that they'd be doing a lot of videos or demonstrations or really descriptive planning for those students. And we recognize that was a tall order. And that was one of the big things with the alignment of the groups, not being able to keep the same pacing because the level of detail, the amount of planning, video recording and all the rest that a teacher would need to do in order to keep pace with what they can do when they walk in with the at-home, with the in-person group was different. So this is going to mitigate that. But it is that student engagement that we're after. Because we're not, Tom said it very well, we're not after this passive, you know, school TV channel that I watch. We are after, and that's kind of the feedback to the teachers. When you're streaming, that's the whole PD on the instructional model. There should be a purpose for the kids at home and watching. And it's not just to, to be dazzled by your brilliance up there presenting. It's so that they can have the question and the answer, so that their thinking can be made visible in the class so that they can have collaboration opportunities with their peers and with the teacher. So that's what we're after. And I would, I would shudder to, to, to simply ask a teacher to videotape what they did with half of the group and then deliver that as learning to the other half. I think that would be, that would be less than what we had been doing.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the rationale behind that because I think it really shows that, you know, the, the good faith, you know, a, a, a part of addressing those 900 hours.
Thank you. Amanda?
Hi, thank you. My question is just regarding some opportunities that we have for the students to voice their thoughts as the year goes on. I, you know, thinking about the survey that was taken, we, and so the kids know, I know that there's quite a lot of kids who are watching the meetings, which I didn't realize before, that there's a lot of watch parties. So thank you for those of you who are tuning into our board meeting. But we have read all of your comments and just so you do know that. And one of the things that, and I can, I know, just to be honest with you, I shared some of your concerns early on. But the more I learned about the details of the plan, the more I really understand and appreciate why it's happening. Sorry if you hear the squeaking, that's our dog. And why some of those pieces were organized the way they are. Particularly, you think about the contacts involved. And as we're moving forward, if the students aren't necessarily going to be able to have as much input as they might like to have on the frameworks of what we do, because this is pandemic education, it's going to be pandemic education for the entire school year. So I can't imagine that it stands to reason that the kids are really going to have a lot of input on the framework. But moving forward, where I would love to hear from the students, and I think presents an opportunity for extensive input, is where they feel like things are going well within that 75-minute period. So which things are working really well? So I guess my question is, how, and it doesn't need to be answered tonight, but I'm just offering this particularly for Rashil and Lilly. If there are ways for the kids to utilize their reps here on the, on the Board of Ed and to work with the student groups that you talked about, how they can convey which things they're really, that are really resonating for them so that we can hear that and the teachers can hear that and that they can really get specific about their input? Is there going to be some help for the kids to structure that input?
I, first, I'm going to, I'm going to also welcome, I'll make a couple of fast comments, but I think I welcome Lilly and Rashil. Piggyback on your question, Amanda, which is, which is a great one. I just, I just want to introduce a couple of comments that I did get a fair amount of student input delivered to me through teachers prior to student focus groups. I had a, I had a student focus group as recently as yesterday. Rashil was, happened to be on that call with a, with a handful of colleagues from, from Hall and also from Connor. And I personally was very impressed by some of the comments and some of the questions and points that students wanted to raise. A lot of it, I think, is just good communication that we want to have in general at the building level because there was a lot of anxiety over, you know, am I going to be on this reel-to-reel 75-minute, block one through four, watch school all day? And I wanted to be able to assure students and, and I want, you know, and I want a feedback mechanism that students tell me I'm telling the truth, that we're telling our teachers, don't do that. Don't do 75 minutes every single day out of the gate because it's easy to just hit play. It's not necessarily engaging for your learners at home unless you have developed a lesson plan that draws them in. And you've thought about, you know, what are the, you know, you've thought about the screen time and some of those differences. And there were a couple of student comments that, that they talked about that. I took all the feedback that I had from before and from the student group, focus groups, and, and sent that back out to our extended leadership and asked them to talk about it with their teachers. And one of the things that we're putting into the PD that we're doing this week is we're saying, hey, in these first three days, talk to your students. Find out from them specifically what's working. But in terms of, you know, one of the promises I, I talk to students about is I do want the ability to have a feedback loop that checks in with them to see how we're going, especially if we remain in this hybrid situation for an extended period of time, you know, beyond, beyond just this semester, let's say. What are the things, you know, we, we need to remain nimble and flexible and, and learn as we go. And so there, there need to be feedback loops that are created likely within the building. You know, certainly our Board of Ed representatives are, are, you know, a perfect structure to be able to make that comment, not only to us as administration, you as the board, but the community as well. And I can easily work with our principals to make sure that, that they're, you know, affording those opportunities. But, but I get a lot of that feedback as well directly from the teachers. But I, I certainly appreciated, you know, getting to talk with students myself. And maybe I shut up and let Lilly and Rashil kind of add to that.
So actually, Lorna, if it's okay with you, I'll skip over and go back to you for your question because Lilly had a question. So if you want to take this opportunity to answer and then also ask your question, that'd be great.
Yeah, so actually, at the beginning of this year, I was kind of thinking that maybe something that I could do and work with Mr. Zatun on this is creating some kind of suggestion box for students to voice their concerns about issues around the school. But I think we could probably modify that to be specifically concerns and successes with the hybrid schedule. I was kind of envisioning like, maybe some kind of Google form on the website that we could advertise through the morning announcements or something like that, where students could type in something that either they think is a problem with the schedule or something that they enjoy about it. And then I would have access to that and I would be able to report about that at the meetings. So I could probably work with Mr. Zatun about creating something like that because I do think that students would be interested in using something like that. I think it would be popular because I think, from what I've heard so far, a lot of people have a lot to say. And then my question was, one of the bigger concerns about the new hybrid schedule is disengagement from online students. So I was kind of wondering if there's going to be a way that you will monitor participation and engagement with students? Or if you will be tracking maybe certain teaching styles that are more successful than others with the new schedule?
So great suggestion and great question. The state of Connecticut has actually leaned forward on that whole disengagement question. And I don't know if it was about a week or maybe two weeks into the school year, they, they are asking all school districts to report metrics on student disengagement. So every week, every teacher in the district gets an email and they're asked to identify any, you know, students by name and then by class, if, if there's a disengagement problem. And our administrators in our buildings obviously kind of have a pulse on that information. So, you know, the short answer to that is yes, it's, it's actually already ongoing. And the good news is, I was, I was actually reviewing that data this evening prior to the meeting to see that over the last several weeks, we've done, we've done a good job knocking that number down, you know, fairly significantly. I imagine if, if I had to kind of guess at, at some of the issues early on, as we were standing things up, we know, you know, we were working with our IT office. We had a significant amount of, of technology distribution that was ongoing. And knowing how that has kind of take curve and, you know, slowed off, the, the dramatic reduction in the number of students that are disengaged is a, is a very positive, kind of positive thing to look at. But I know that there are still disengaged students. And I know folks right here in my own office have been going out and doing home visits along with administrators in school to find out when kids aren't coming in, kind of what's happening. And I know we've, we've also made some, some minor tweaks to, to some of our high need students to make sure that we have the right supports in place for them in terms of securing their engagement.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Rashil, can you chime in on some ways that you might be able to utilize your position with us to share information from your fellow students? And then also, I know you too had a question.
Yes, I think that, I think Mr. Vicina sort of referenced this already. But I think, I think just if students have concerns over like some of the live streaming methods, I think first talking to the teachers is really helpful, because I know that teachers do a really good job of listening to student feedback. For example, if you're feeling disengaged in the class or feeling bored, I think just first reaching out to the teacher can really help in terms of making that experience a lot better. But I think more overall, like, larger issues that extend beyond the teacher's control, I think sort of doing, sort of what Lilly said, having a suggestion box, even at Conner, I think, is also a great idea. And I think is something I can work with Mr. Duarte in terms of getting that out there. And I know that sort of the student body at Conner has also had a lot of opinions and a lot of voices, and they have people, and I know like a lot of my classmates have also expressed their feelings on this model. And I think a suggestion box in general, I think, does a nice job of putting all those things together. And I know that even groups at like Conner, like the student council has also sort of wanted to also express their concerns as well. And so working with them as well is something that I can also do to bring in more student voice. I'm a question, the question that I had, and is I think something that a lot of students have expressed concern about is with regards to mental health. And I feel like if you can address those concerns, I think, yes, if you could please just sort of address those concerns that people have been having on mental health, and even focus in terms of ADD and ADHD.
I think, you know, that question's come up a lot in a lot of different ways. And I don't want to just blindly disagree with people, but pretty much the research says being in school and being connected is good for mental health, and being connected with your classmates, and being with your teachers, and having structure is good for mental health. And having adults that are checking in with you now, and seeing you regularly in a different way, is also positive for mental health. And so, the more connections we can have, the better it is. And then I'd also say the fact that we have, you know, Paul, do you want to talk about the different opportunities, the community portions?
I'll make sure I hit on the community portions if I understand what you're saying. I was going to share a point that I think is, you know, related. I don't know if it's, if it's exactly what you're asking Rashil, but I was, I was struck by a comment from a young lady in the focus group, who said that in her particular household, you know, her concern was, and she didn't, she didn't overblow it, she, she was being very honest and a little bit vulnerable, and I thought it was a great comment. She said, you know, when I'm on a Google Meet in my home, I'm in my room, because that's the quiet place where I can do it. And it sounded to me like she had a parent, or, or a guardian, or a family member that was there, probably working from home, doing something in their space. She may have had a sibling that was in another room. So, you know, when she had to do school, she had to be in her room, and her concern was kind of being cooped up all the time. And what made that a powerful moment for me was, I was just reflecting, because we were working from home that day. And I started my day working downstairs in my living room, and I was checking my email. Then I knew I was going to have some online meetings. So I came up to my dining room, and I worked there, and I, and I moved into a different room in the house. And it was just, I had that ability to kind of move around and change my scenery. And so I do recognize that, that whole piece. And so, one of the things that we're trying to stress, and it was, it was the anecdote that I did share with all of our teachers, that speaks to that streaming notion, like providing for breaks, just not necessarily because of, you know, I don't have that connection and those deeper things that Mr. Moore is talking about, because those, those are real legitimate, you know, mental health things. And I agree with him, that, that connection and that ability to not be isolated is going to help with that. But I think the stressors and the notion of being stuck in one place all the time, I want to make sure that students know to develop a routine, to change that up, to during their free period, take a walk outside, or, or do another task, or get that physical activity in. These are the kinds of things when, when someone's home in their off week, that, that they really do need to think about and attend to. And, and so it's something that I want to make sure teachers provide the opportunity for, okay, you know, we've had a segment of this lesson, I'm going to ask you guys to do some work, you know, but take that brain break, take that, you know, just go change your scenery, go sit in a different room if you can, or something like that, because that's equally important. I don't know if that answered your question, but that was, what came to mind when you were talking?
Rashil, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll go to Lorna and Ari.
Thank you. And thank you for providing an overview of hybrid 2.0. And as you were describing, there were certain adjectives that you used quite often, certainly engaging, purpose, and wanting to have collaborative opportunities. My question is, and I preface by recognizing there is no way to actually guarantee the question, but we know that we have school dress code. Is there any encouragement to encourage young people, even when they're at home, to still adhere to some form of a dress code? And then I think that serves two purposes. A, just trying to keep the continuity of even though you're at home, you still are in school. But also two, I think it touches on what was, has been talked about so far in terms of mental health, in terms of engagement. And when you get up and get dressed and put clothes on, that can help to get someone stimulated, hopefully. But has there been any thought of, any thought about encouraging appropriate attire even when learning at home?
Lorna, thank you very. Well, can I interrupt and just say, Lorna, do you want another petition against me where people are going to threaten to arrest me again? What are you doing to me? I want to say thank you to one. Notion of, you know, etiquette, and, and having that routine, and recognizing that yes, you're at home, but this is, this is sort of scheduled time for learning, is very important. And, and it's somewhat sensitive, because, you know, every home situation's different. So, we do have, you know, students that may be kind of coming in, and maybe their quiet space and their study space is, you know, is their bedroom as opposed to a dining room table or something like that. So, but, but we want to see students on their cameras. We want to be able to read their facial expressions. We want to be able to know if they've got the confused look on their face, or if they're nodding and they really get it. We want to be able to then be able to call on them. So we're looking for those things. We're looking for cameras on, we're looking for, you know, ready-to-go, dressed, you know, alert, attending, paying attention to what's there versus, you know, not really sure if the camera's off, or if they're out of the view, or anything else. And it's the same model that we've told the teachers, you know, if we do this in our young, and young adults, we need to model the same behavior as, as professionals. So it is definitely something that we do encourage, and, and I appreciate you bringing it up so that we can kind of reinforce that.
Thank you. And Tom, no, no offense at all, I'm not trying to start anything, but thank you for receiving the question.
All right, we'll move to Ari.
So I don't have an actual question, but I just wanted to speak as a board member, but also as the parent of a high school sophomore who got the news about hybrid 2.0. I just, I really want to thank you as, as a board member and as a parent, for all of the thought and planning that went into creating this hybrid 2.0, because I really see it as, it complements and addresses some of the concerns that had been brought up, you know, about not having enough seat time, but also this whole idea of a lot of districts who are just either pre-recording classes or live streaming. And I think what you guys have done really kind of balances that out by, you know, supplementing that live stream piece for those remote kids who are sitting and watching, supplementing that with that afternoon remote time to allow them to ask questions, to allow them to engage with the teachers, which in my opinion is really one of the most important pieces of this, is that you're helping to maintain the connection and engagement between teachers and students. And, you know, as we all know, that's really the key piece to student engagement, is if they feel, you know, valued and respected and, and seen by their teachers. So, I'd like to thank you for hybrid 2.0. I might not be one of the most popular people in town right now, but I do support the plan. And, and I actually think it, it, it will serve better. It serves two purposes for me. The other piece in terms of the mental health, I also agree with you, Tom, but I'm wondering, you know, there is still that stigma around mental health, and people, you know, if people are struggling, students, parents, whoever, I mean, we're in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, and anybody with a pre-existing condition, it's just being exacerbated by, you know, kind of the world we're living in. So I'm wondering if there's a way, if this isn't being done, that we can provide some list or resources to families and students, what mental health resources are available, because I just worry that people may not ask. So if we take a proactive stance and say, if your student is struggling, or even like, here are the signs and symptoms of depression or anxiety, you might want to reach out, and here are some local, you know, providers that can help you.
Yeah, we've done that, and I appreciate that, but it's, it's actually a very good time of year to do that anyway, and with the pandemic. So we'll talk to Gretchen about rolling it out more generally, whereas we've used our school counselors to try to check in with people. And, and you know, I don't know if that's the last question, but Ari, I appreciate your kind words. I do want to make one thing clear, since Paul and I presented it, let me, let me make it clear. Paul and I hate hybrid. I mean, we both want to be in school more than we, we're basically dragged kicking and screaming to have to create this and not just bring everybody back. I still can't figure out the way to get that done safely yet. But the goal, and we will this year, be back in school at some point. And I, I like to believe that eventually this wave passes, and as we shift, it may take till shifting into 2021, but that we are, our goal is still get our kids back in altogether sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
I have one question before I move on to folks who have second questions. And so, I think I heard something tonight that I had not really processed before. I think I was under the, the mistaken belief that the students who were streaming in would essentially be watching, and that the team would be able to maintain focus just on the students in the classroom. So I think what I'm hearing now is, we are going to be asking teachers to kind of shift their focus back and forth between the students in front of them and the students who are online. Is that what we're hoping the teachers will learn to do?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement, Deb, and that, you know, that's where teachers are told, really be thoughtful about how much you're going to stream based on your ability to do that, be thoughtful in your lesson design. And I think it's important for me to point out, just very briefly, I don't want to take up a lot more time, but, you know, there are certain classes where we give permission to teachers, especially where there are safety concerns. For instance, I'm in a woodworking class, I've got students on a lathe, I don't want you streaming that lesson. I want you paying attention to the kids that are in front of you, where their hands are, you know, all the different safety protocols. We encourage our physical education teachers to bring their classes outside as much as possible, weather permitting. They are going to focus on some more asynchronous approaches, just because of the outdoor nature, or the fact that sometimes, you know, a gymnasium is not the most acoustically, you know, positive setup for, for a streaming class. So there, there are definitely, you know, certain scenarios where they're going to do something slightly different, because it makes the most sense educationally or from a safety perspective. But in general, yeah, our goal is for have kids collaborating. And that, that was the lessons learned when we talked to all the other districts about what were they doing, what was successful, what was an obstacle. Places that were more successful, it didn't have a whole lot to do with, with streaming, it had a lot to do with instructional design within streaming.
And I have faith that our teachers will be able to learn from the professional development that you'll be providing. And, you know, it may not be perfect at first, but we'll learn and grow, and that's part of our continuous improvement process. My other question really quickly was that, you know, we have received some feedback questioning the process for who was chosen to provide input. So I was just wondering if there is a way that you could address that very briefly?
Yeah, I'll let Paul talk about it directly, but I think sometimes there's a misnomer that the only input that would be valuable would come to me. And A, I'm just not that available. Like I had a student say, you'll meet with us at this time. And I'm like, I, my schedule's, I mean, I'm not that available. Paul has gone out, Anne has gone out, but really, this is a building-based discussion in a lot of ways. And I know both Mr. Zatun and Mr. Duarte are meeting with students regularly this week about, about that. Students that have written to them, I've seen their responses, where it's, why don't you come down at 9 o'clock this time, and we can speak one-on-one? And they use their own student councils to get information, and they'll continue to do that. They'll also use our board reps. Paul, I don't know if there's anything you want to add besides your own meetings with people?
Yeah, I, I'll be honest, Deb, we have, we have roughly 1,000 teachers in the district. We got nowhere near 1,000 teachers serving on the various committees. We have a reasonable number who have served throughout the summer. They've given up a number of hours. I made intentional requests of them when we had our scheduling committees talking about hybrid 2.0, talking about hybrid 1.0, to not pull them from their classes. So they've given up their time after-school hours. The committee members represented, we had three separate committees that I worked with on scheduling, and reconvened them for the hybrid 2.0. The middle school and the high school group, they represent a variety of content areas to include specials. The names were helped to be selected by recommendations from the WHEA. We've had ongoing meetings with the WHEA leadership and with the teacher reps. And at one of our meetings, we had all the teacher reps there, and we filled Room 400 to the point where we were like, okay, little concern on physical distancing, because we filled up that room. And I know several of the board members were there, and know that there were a good number of teachers. I've got pages of teacher input that came through departments, which is pretty much how I expect things to work, because with 1,000 teachers or 500 teachers at the secondary level, I want to utilize our extended leadership team to give a message, to be able to, to share that information out with teachers, to be able to have conversations, to be able to bring it back. And I'll just share that, in all of the feedback that I've received, I haven't been, like dramatically surprised in the middle of the night, like where we've gotten feedback and said, hey, that's something that you need to think about. I didn't get it just once from a dark corner somewhere. I got it 15 times over and over again. So I recognize that we're a big organization, and people want to be heard. They, they, they have been. They may not have been personally touched by me or by Tom, but we've gotten feedback. We've gotten volumes of it. And I mean, I get it. At the end of the day, we're talking about a lot of people that are doing a stressful job under very difficult conditions this year. It looks very different from what they're used to. And so, it's a natural thing to say, does anyone realize how tough this is for me this year? And, and, you know, my answer is yes, and I definitely appreciate it. But I, I want people to know that, you know, they are heard, even if... even if, even if it wasn't me on the phone with them, talking with them, the feedback has been received. It's been considered, it's been acted upon. In many cases, we've been trying to do what we hear from teachers. Sometimes our answer is, yeah, I hear that, but I can't do it that way.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. We can't accept questions from members of the public during the meeting. We will have a second public comment at the end of the meeting. I know Amanda and Jason, you both had questions, so let's get to those. And then I want to wrap it up and move on to our next item.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just, I know I speak for the full board and we thank the teachers for going through this transition and everything that they're doing to prepare for that. So we just wanted to make sure that we said that to you because we've been talking about that a lot, of course. I just also wanted to close out that conversation about this student feedback. This is an ideal year for you to practice your advocacy. And we're very, very excited for you to do that. One point of feedback for you on things like surveys. One of the things that we noticed because we did read all of your comments was that many of them came in before the detailed information was released about the plan. So as things come up throughout the year, think about, am I responding from an informed perspective? Or am I having kind of a knee-jerk reaction that isn't quite informed yet? So that that's going to be something that happens a lot because Mr. Moore is trying to give us as a community as much lead time as possible when things are going to change. But we might not have all of the information yet, so there's going to be a lag as they prepare things to help us understand it, particularly things like visuals and graphs. So think about when you're talking about how to give feedback, be asking each other, have you done the reading? Do you know the details yet? Because then when you make comments and we can tell when someone says, I've read the information and here's something that still concerns me, that's going to hold a lot more weight because we know that you've read through some of the details. So if that is helpful to you, it's very helpful to us when we know when you've looked through the information and then you have a comment versus kind of commenting on something you haven't learned about yet. So that's just one point moving forward. If you want to use surveys, that will help us learn more about how you're feeling.
Good advice. Jason?
All right. Thank you. Yep. I have two things that may be interrelated, so I'll ask them together. The first one was just a kind of follow-up with the, what you were saying about the home visits. I didn't know that y'all did that and that's, that sounds really incredible that you've been able to make those kinds of connections. And just to underscore the issue that Ari was speaking about, about counseling, made me wonder if the home visits count as counseling referrals? Or if those, if those home visits do frequently lead to counseling referrals? Just because there is a real difference between access to resources and the usage of them. And, you know, I'm really, you know, just grateful for this conversation because it's about the norms of education. And I really think these, these things are really important, the choices that you're making about how education is, you know, how you're doing that in our schools. And then the related point is about English language learners and their performance with this. Just that, you know, I thought I would ask because it's not, it's not a part of necessarily the the comments that were coming in that we were reading. But, you know, it also made me think that perhaps English language learners might not be, their voices might not be represented in that. So we just wanted to ask and see how their performance was and if, you know, what ways they've been able to see that.
Sure. Great questions. First, in terms of the referrals on home visits, it is certainly true that when we are able to make contact with a family through a home visit, it can lead to all sorts of different referrals. We've had several that we can speak to where when we get out there, you know, we noticed it was, you know, sometimes a technology issue. We didn't have reliable internet service. We were able to outfit those families with hotspots that are provided to us through the state. We were able to provide them with, they needed a device. I know that, you know, we've worked closely with Rosina where then you just hear about other things and I'm having trouble, you know, financially and we look at what we can help them with through the contacts that we have with community service. I know that we had a home visit today that led to a referral for some other issues. So, you know, it does open the door because it's, at the end of the day, it's the opportunity to to connect with families and you're kind of going in there saying, hey, we're concerned, we have, and typically the families are able to kind of open up to you at that point and share some information that they wouldn't be volunteering unless in that position. You forgive me, the second half of your question escaped me for the moment.
ELL, Paul.
ELL, thank you. Our ELL population is one that we do want to pay attention to. There was actually a report that was released this afternoon at 5:00 PM from the state of Connecticut. I talked earlier to Lily about, you know, the state's been monitoring engagement and disengagement in ELL. Definitely one of the populations that the state is generally concerned with. It's definitely something that we've noticed. We can have a greater percentage of students who are disengaged in their off week within the EL population. And they're traditionally a little bit harder to make sure, connect with, make sure that they've received the message, they've received and understood the message in their primary language. We've had the ability to do translators. You know, I know we got a lot of feedback within this plan, part of hybrid 2.0, they need to change some of the release times for parent conflict group. And we already had translators set up and so we had to change that. So it is definitely a group that we have in our sites. I had a conversation with Shalise Ross, who is our townwide curriculum specialist for that program today, just talking to her about hybrid 2.0, about changes in the schedule and trying to get her assessment of new, and I know that Ann McKernan in my office is working with a group of EL students. She oversees Shalise. And she was doing home visits and several of those home visits this week were to our EL population at the secondary level. So it's, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but they're definitely a group that we're paying close attention to. And I did want to just close, I wanted to echo Amanda's comment relative to the teachers that have been engaged in this process, just to close those out. If I didn't say it enough before, dramatically dedicated group that gave me the feedback and I want to offer my thanks to them in this forum for what they're doing on behalf of all their peers. I know everyone's doing amazing work, but it's great when you can dig in, just like with students, we're digging with teachers, see kind of what they're doing to help make us successful this year. And I think everyone's doing a heck of a job.
Thank you. And thank you for that engaging, that's the word that you think, I guess, engaging discussion. And I suspect we'll be hearing a lot more about this model or any other model we end up needing to adapt to and adopt over the course of the next several months. So thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to staff reports and board discussions, enrollment and class size analysis as of October 1, and we're going to have a report from Liz Hewitt.
I want to, I do want to introduce this with Paul mentioned, we just got a report. I got a report from the state at six o'clock that kind of meshes with this, that mirrors our numbers with the state when it looks at some people not there. And I also want to, I'm not trying to rush people through. I can see a lot of people have bags under their eyes. It's probably late nights for people, so by all means ask questions. I just, this report every year is a, it's just a huge rabbit hole. Anywhere you go, there's fascinating things to talk about and I'm fascinated by it too, but we've only had this for a couple of days. So my answers to a lot of things and Liz's answers may be, you're right, we're wondering that too. And we're going to look at that because a lot of interest and things have come up, some things that we're aware of. But with that, go ahead, Liz.
Thank you. So you have your annual enrollment report in your board book. It starts on page two. And as you know, we present this every year with the purpose of providing you official 10-1 enrollment data, comparing our actual enrollments to what we had projected the prior year and reviewing class sizes. And as Tom alluded to, this is an unusual year and we see the effect of the pandemic reflected in both our enrollment variances and some of our class size anomalies. And so the report is structured with three pages of just highlights and narratives and then 10 tables which dive into a little bit more of the detail. What my plan is, is to really just go through the highlights and then answer any questions that you might have with the best information that we have at this time. So as of 10-120, we had 8,870 students. And when we talk about the number of students, we are measuring our K to 12 in district students. And if you flip to the chart on the top of page three, that really, I was just going to try to pull that up on the screen in case you don't have it. Can you see that? No.
Not yet.
Okay, give it one second. No?
Still can't.
Still can't. Oh.
I?
Fail. Okay.
Oh, I think we may be having some bandwidth issues, so.
Yeah, that could be true because I do see that.
I keep cutting the video and now.
Yeah, we are cutting in and out a little bit.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, well hopefully if we don't, don't cut in and out.
All right, there you are.
That is page three and you see the chart on top of the page three actually compares our actual enrollment to what our enrollment was in October of 2019 and what we had projected our enrollment to be on 10-1-2020. So on 10-1-19, we had 9,159 students. So this year it's a reduction of 283 students from the prior year. And we had projected to have 9,079 students, which is a reduction of 203 from what we, our actual enrollment count was. It's a reduction of 2.2%, which is a pretty significant variance for us. Usually our projections are closer than that. And we think it's really been several factors that have contributed to this. You know, certainly the pandemic has changed people's actions as far as deciding to send students to private schools perhaps. We have had some families who have decided to homeschool. We have had families that have moved out of town. And we certainly have had kindergarten students who have elected to wait another year before enrolling in school. So we think that all of those factors are affecting our enrollment this year. I had mentioned that the tables provide additional information. And table two really compares our projections to actual by grade and by school. And you can see there that we see variances at every age level, every grade and at every screen. So we don't attribute it to something in particular. It seems to be more of a global issue. When we look at class sizes at an elementary level, we have 175 in-person elementary sections and 30 remote sections for a total of 205. On an in-person basis, we're an average class size of 17.6 students. And we purposely kept those classes smaller in order to allow for social distancing and for really the health and the safety of students. Our average remote class size is a bit larger than that. We're at 23.1. And while that does sound higher, we wanted to note that those students do not all meet at one time. The elementary remote students are broken up into groups. And so you have five to seven students meeting at a time with their teacher. So those class sizes have been manageable. Our overall average in elementary level is at 18.4%. That's a bit lower than prior years. Prior years, we've been closer to about 19.8 or 20 students. On the screen in front of you, you can see our average middle school class sizes. Certainly we have the details for Bristow, King, Philip, Cedric, and there's a detailed sheet for our remote school. You can see that in 2021, the average varies more than typical for the middle schools. And that really is a factor of how many students at each school elected to go remote, resulting in some fluctuations in class size. But they vary from 18.1 to about 21.5. Again, very manageable and reasonable class sizes. The high school chart is at the bottom of this page. You can see that for our core classes, Connor has an average class size of 20.4, Paul has 21.1, and our remote has 17, a little bit smaller as we try to meet the needs of our remote high school students. But when we look at an average high school class size overall, they're all three are approximately at 19 students. So it's been a challenge this year to really balance our staff and balance class sizes. But we really feel comfortable with where we have ended up and that students are getting the attention and support that they need.
This has been immense work. I want to thank Liz for keeping track of it. This is, this is a whole team structure because Paul scheduling with the principals, Rick trying to keep up with all the hiring, Carrie keeping track of what's going on in the online learning, who's registering and how. Andy with the distancing within the classroom, Gretchen staffing across all levels, and Rosina looking at who's engaging, who's disengaging, who's in the remote learning? Why are those students choosing remote learning at higher percentages? Just really remarkable. I will say, you know, we've lost some students this year from projection and I can't talk about the report that I just talked about saying the state sent out because as I look at it, I see that it's embargoed, so I can't give specifics other than we track exactly with the state in the state findings. So as far as people that were here and now no longer are.
Tom had mentioned that, you know, that we're tracking our remote school and the demographics. And I wanted to provide a little bit of information which isn't in the report, but hopefully you can see this chart that looks at the demographics of our district as a whole versus the demographics of our students who have elected remote learning. And this data is still preliminary in that our filing with the state is not complete. Do they see you leaning forward? Can you see that? Is it big enough? Okay, so you have.
I can't read what the words say as well. What are the green bars?
I can't read what the green and the blue are, what they stand for.
So the green is our K to 12 total percentage. So for example, if we look at our first bar, which is minority students, you can see that 43% of our total K to 12 population classifies as minority. And there's a note at the bottom that the state defines that term and minority students are defined by the state as those who are American Indian, Alaska Native, Asian, Black or African American, Hispanic, Latino, Native Hawaiian or two or more races. So it's a standard definition that every district follows. But you can see the blue are students of our 1,403 students who elected to go remote. 69.9% of them classify as minority. When you look at English language learners, overall in the district, 6.4% are ELL, whereas 11.8 of our remote students are ELL. For special education as a district, we're at 13.1%. In the remote school, we're at 17.3%. And as far as students eligible for free and reduced lunch, overall at a district, we're at 26.7%. And our students who elected to attend remotely are 48%. So this topic had come up at a previous meeting and I was asked to pull together some demographic information. And as I said, these are kind of the standard categories that we look at. But I wanted to be able to provide this to you just as a snapshot of what our remote school looks like compared to our overall district. But I wanted to be able to provide this to you just as a snapshot of what our remote school looks like compared to our overall district.
Rosina, do you want to add some context? Um, I know even with open choice students and some of the things we've been looking at.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It, it is a conundrum, you know, just like educators. We know that parents are wrestling every day with a host of decisions about just, you know, how to keep kids safe and how to keep them school engaged. I just want to go back to something Tom mentioned. He mentioned the teacher response to the D's F list. And I want to mention that because, you know, last week during our district-wide equity professional learning series, we shared the D's F's data broken down with all teachers pre-K through 12. I mean, we asked them to react to it. And we, similarly, we did the same thing. We shared the RLE enrollment data broken down um, just as you've seen it here. And we asked teachers to react to it. We asked them to generate questions and discuss what they notice and what they wonder because it is perplexing. Um, and we, we can hypothesize all day long, we can make assumptions, but unless we ask families, we don't know what factors truly influence their tough decisions. And so just like we are um, asking students about their school experience in this environment, um, we want to do more of that with our families. So early on, we wanted to understand what families were grappling with in their decision to opt students into hybrid or into uh, into the remote learning experience. And we considered initially sending out a survey to ask families who've opted into remote learning, share with us like some factors that influenced that choice and um, and then as things started to shift with our most recent elementary change, we decided that we would look at what the data tells us um, now. Let's look presently at our, you know, we're getting ready to launch uh, hybrid 2.0. We have our elementary full return. Now let's look at who's still um, in remote learning. Let's look at, you know, the de- the demographics of that. And let's ask parents, but let's organize uh, virtual focus groups with a survey option too, just so we can hear, you know, what, what they're struggling with, grappling with, concerned about. So we, we said, we wanted to begin to look at what we've done, what we've learned so far to inform our next steps. So some of the efforts and we've hard talked about them earlier. We have done school-based virtual forums. We've done personalized phone calls. Um, principals inviting phone calls and email from parents to ask questions and share concerns. Um, we, our school teams are out there. They're, you know, foot soldiers out there. They're doing porch visit. We call them porch visits and lawn visits. And we set, we set up this model to dispatch teams to our lay families, um, including those who are at home during hybrid week that aren't engaging as Paul talked about. And we thought we would come back with some answers, you know, here are all the reasons, you know, we've called these families. And it just, what happens is we discover there are so many other, is a host of needs and circumstances that lead us to having to make referrals to social services. Um, just really spending time um, identifying barriers and removing barriers from families that we weren't, you know, we hadn't set out to um, to experience or discover. Um, so we're going to continue to do that, but we do have some qualitative and some anecdotal reports from all of those efforts. And um, with the additional help of our family engagement liaisons, Amy Yarborough for our open choice program and Amanda Gohler and our parent professionals, we have been able to expedite outreach um, so that we can clarify or remove barriers, things that are getting away. And what we learned from our parents' focus groups from um, open choice, Amy conducted open choice uh, focus groups. We have 218 students enrolled in the district, I think between 218 and 221 through the open shows program. So that's about 160 families. There are 67 open choice families that have opted into the remote learning experience. So we were desperate to understand their reasons and circumstances and their needs. So we have done focus groups um, yeah, different times, three of them. And we'll be doing some more um, now that we've had some changes. And we are looking at, we're comparing how they responded, you know, in the earlier survey and the earlier time with um, you know, reasons now why they might remain or why there are some changes. And um, so we're going to look at that data. The one big vehicle that we're excited about, that we were hopeful about to give us some more information um, is that we are, we have representation on our townwide wellness assessment committee. Uh, so we'll have our first committee meeting tomorrow. And that'll give us access to more human capital, people who can go out and can make phone calls and can visit with families and ask questions. We'll have more access to data collection tools and re- and instruments that will help us to like utilize and understand and understand the decisions of our families. Um, and then it's, we have um, UConn involved in that, in that research too. So you know, it, it'll help us to extend our outreach and get some, answer some questions and clarify some things because we, it, it, it's puzzling to us and we don't want to make assumptions. And we don't discount um, things like maybe it, there's trust um, involved in that. Or maybe it's our communication disconnects. We want to be transparent about all of those things and honest about. But we, so we're going to expand our structures for a two-way um, to, for a two-way parent feedback loop. And so we have some vehicles to help us do that. I wish I had all the answers to that. I don't. But we will, we'll get, we're going to get some answers.
Thank you. And Liz, can I ask if you will send us that chart and put it on our website as well?
Yeah, I definitely will.
Thank you so much. Um, and then I will be squinting at it at the uh, computer screen. Uh, are there any questions from board members? Uh, Jason?
Yeah, um, thank you for, for spelling out uh, those details. You know, this isn't um, something that has bearing for, you know, the, the um, the safety and the COVID numbers for, for the schools. But I'm wondering if you uh, if, if you're getting information about COVID transmission among the families in remote. And um, and if those are, i- if, one, if you do, and then also is that the similar to, to what we see uh, for the contacts that we do make um, in uh, in, for the people who are in person?
We, we get it reported to us in terms of um, cause we'll know the kid's not, the child's not there or what the um, I mean, the difference is we don't contact trace those. So we don't have the same level of detail and we don't put it on our website because I don't want it confused with in-school transmission. Andy, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, just that, you know, you're right, Tom. We don't, we post on the website that we actually don't post uh, the remote learning students for that. We are notified of them and they are some of the students that we track as far as illness and contacts and under quarantine.
Anyone else? Alright, well, thank you very much. And um, this is always a really interesting report and I'm sure on our leisure time, we'll go back and read through all the enrollments per class for, for school. So thank you for providing us. Alright, we will move on to uh, routine matters and the financial report. So uh, the recommendation is that the board approve the financial report, period, it's 2020. I'll take a motion, a second, and then we'll have discussion. Is there a motion? Um, the motion that we accept the financial report and approve the financial report for the period ending September 30, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. And um, discussion. And Mark, will you walk us through?
Yeah, sure. Um, thanks. This is um, you know, the essence of time, actually kind of a short report because there's not a lot of um, uh, significant um, numbers here to report in September. Um, they grow as the, as the fiscal year goes on. Um, as you'll see, the general fund will have a surplus of $48,000. And that's made up of, of um, salaries. Um, where we're going to have a surplus of $83,000 and that comes um, from the, the projected savings of the two librarians. Um, some pupil service uh, salaries uh, will be over budget. Um, but um, things that, you know, um, the CARES Act funding uh, that we'll talk about later on is 15 positions. Uh, but they haven't been backfilled yet. Um, so there's, there's a budget there of a surplus of 83,000 for salaries and then benefits. Uh, the unemployment is uh, $35,000 um, for the fiscal year. And that's the uh, people are on uh, longer unemployment time, so the, the dollars are up there. Um, purchase services. Um, expected to be within the budget, so zero. And then supplies and materials uh, exactly the same too, zero as well. Um, the general fund, um, the approximately um, 6.8 million dollars. Um, and we're uh, the grants have been extended. Um, and we're going to have those uh, funds through June 30th of um, 2021. Uh, but we have been awarded two grants, um, COVID-19 related. And it's the second, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. Um, so that's for that 15 additional instruction staffs um, to meet the educational needs that we have. And then the other one is the Corona's, the coronavirus relief fund, uh, which is 1.1, uh, almost 1.2 million dollars to the district um, for COVID-19 emergencies. So um, and that spending, um, some of those two, those two new grants um, will be below the line. And then the special programs fund, um, we have a surplus of $41,000 and we're expected about $12,000 of interest income. And um, again, the impact of the pandemic, pandemic, but the, the facility rentals and things that we haven't been able to take advantage of preschool tuition and things like that. But summer school was profitable this, this past summer. And nutritional services always, this is uh, especially in these times, it's difficult. September in, in, in general uh, is a difficult, um, uh, we're always behind the eight ball uh, as far as finances go in September. But this year being the pandemic, it's um, even worse. So uh, everything's all grab and go, free meals for everyone. Um, but we're looking at operating loss of um, $195,000 for September. Um, we receive about $4 per meal um, refunding from federal government. We have part of this, the, part of this uh, this operational loss is that we do have 16% in remote learnings and the, you know, hybrid models, so half are in school. And with only revenue of $4 uh, per meal, it, it, it quickly um, adds up as a loss. And their losses are expected to continue. So just to give you an idea, year to date, we had 72,000 meals uh, versus 17,000 meals years to date. And if you do the math, the differential on that, that's $220,000 at $4 a meal. The difference between 72,000 meals versus uh, 72,000 versus 17,000 meals. So um, quite significant. Um, that really, you know, it's not, there's not a lot of um, meat and potatoes, if you will, in this report. Um, and it's very difficult times. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions um, that you may have for me or Elizabeth.
Thank you. Are there questions? Amanda, is that a question that you put in for the last item that I missed by accident? Or is that a question on the financial report?
That's okay. It was actually just saying with Liz's report from earlier that um, I, I would love that if we can continue using that as a reference as we start to think about the budget when we get there. Because I think it is more important to talk about it then because it'll, I mean, as we go along because it'll have different meaning as we approach different stages. Um, I did have a question and my, my one question about this is regarding the nutrition services. Are we encouraging the kids to take lunches um, knowing that it's reimbursed? I know, I know from my own kids in middle and high school that, you know, they're, they're well aware. Um, you know, that the food is there. Uh, but sometimes being, you know, the kids, they, they might not be sure if they're able to do that or there's still some questions here and there. Um, is that something that the teachers can encourage the kids to do? Is that something that would be helpful in this way if there's kids who are hesitant or should we just kind of leave it alone?
No, I think we're really doing everything we can to um, to encourage students to take the meals. Um, you know, we have it posted on our website with all of our COVID information. Um, we are actually distributing high school meals um, in the hallways, not just the cafeterias. The students are leaving, they can take one as they go. Um, we're really trying to message out to our students um, and families that the purpose of this is really to get nutritious food to every student. It's not something that's just for students who may normally uh, qualify for free and reduced lunch. Um, and it certainly is beneficial to our program um, if we are able to distribute more meals. Um, so we're, we're trying to get that word out as much as we can, but certainly any additional uh, ways that we can communicate that are, are welcome. Tom, did you have something else?
No, I mean, there's almost a moral question to it. How much do we push kids to take a meal because we get a reimbursement? But if we know they're just throwing food away, that's not, you know, so we want to make sure any kids take meals that want the meals and will utilize the meals and everything else. So you know, we, we are pushing it directly.
And we're hoping that now that elementary is back on a, a full-time in-person basis, that we'll see some increased counts. Um, I'm also personally hoping that since high school and middle school will be gaining out a little later, that kids will be hungrier then and will actually be, you know, interested in taking a meal on their way out. Um, but we're not asking anyone to, to take a meal unless they plan to eat it.
Alright, thank you. Cause I think they do, some of the kids, I've heard them wondering if they take the meal, is it taking away from other kids?
And I'm not sure how we get around that. That is a concern and I'm not sure how we message that a little bit better. But I think we have to in order to um, for students to really understand that, no, the goal is really to provide food for everyone.
Thank you. Other questions about the financial report? If not, uh, we have a motion on the floor to approve of the financial report. Um, so I will try your minds. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thanks so much. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes and I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board of education meeting from October 20th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mark. And the second?
Jason Chang, second.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, any discussion on the minutes? If not, I will try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And the ayes have it, the minutes are. Information and reports, board members, communications and reports. Are there any reports from other boards and organizations from board members?
I do have one from the bridge.
Great.
Um, I'm gonna just give one point tonight. I told them based on time, um, I might not give the whole thing. So I'm just going to make one point tonight and the rest I'll save for the next meeting. Um, the biggest point is that the bridge has moved the mental health clinic that used to be on Farmington Avenue. There's going to be another one coming on Farmington Avenue, but right now it's been relocated to um, a really nice new location. Um, it's at 100 Shield Street, which is on the kind of Newington-West Hartford line over in Elmwood. And it's on a bus line and it's been very successful so far. There's a lot of telehealth appointments going on. And that's also where the therapists are um, supporting some of our in-school counseling via telehealth as well. So just to make sure people are aware that um, that clinic is there. It may be within walking distance for families um, who want to go in person, but there's also telehealth.
That's great information. Thank you. Any other um, boards and organization reports? Okay, we'll move on to other information and discussions. Um, I don't think we have any of those, but I, I just do want to comment on something that um, Tom, earlier you had implied that some of the emails that have come in, and I've seen some of them, so I agree with you, have been um, I think unfair, unfairly harsh in tone. And you know, I just recommend that when folks want to advocate, like we've talked about, doing so with respect um, is usually a better way to go about things. Uh, we all are trying to pull together, uh, row in the same direction. And again, we might not all agree, but we can all respect each other and. And again, we might not all agree, but we can all respect each other and just ask it. Um, those of you who are already doing that, continue to do so. And, um, you know, if, sometimes you write something in anger and just take a minute to step back and maybe take a little while before you send something if you think it might, um, come off in a way that doesn't reflect as well as you would like. Um, okay. Moving to non-staff communications and reports and reports from student board representatives, and we'll start with Conard this time, with Rashil.
Yes. So, um, I'll first begin when talking about pink out day at Conard on October 23rd for the blue cohort and October 30th for the red corp, red cohort. Um, pink Conard masks were sold to help raise, um, awareness and money for, um, breast cancer. Um, I'll next sort of talk about some of the remote learning school, um, just to provide some information there. I think in general, families and students have appreciated the structure and the consistency with the remote school experience that serve consistency with the same teachers and the same online experience every day without having to switch back and forth. Um, and students see their teachers every day in the morning and then the afternoon time is spent for more individual, individualized time, um, for more flexible and for more, more small group, um, su- support. Um, and the general sort of feedback, uh, the general sort of feeling from the remote school is then it's been, um, really positive and a lot better than, um, stu- students have been anticipating from before, um, after hearing about this. Um, also, all students have the opportunity, at the remote school have the opportunity to participate in clubs and sports, um, alongside with the hybrid school models and some students in the online school, um, remote school are participating in athletics. Um, all clubs, since all clubs are being held virtually, um, students in the remote learning school have the chance to meet with their peers in the hybrid model during the club activities. This applies to both high schools and middle schools. And in middle schools, some students are attending clubs across schools, which gives them a more variety, um, to experience different, um, activities. And also starting in quarter two, um, the remote school will also be working with the National Honor Society at both high schools to provide peer tutoring for high school and middle schools students, um, after, on the remote school. And I think with the hybrid 2.0, um, at the remote schools, classes will be a little longer, which allows for more individualized time. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Louis?
Um, so I know we've talked a lot about the new hybrid plan in this meeting, but I do still feel obligated to reiterate some of the student concerns because we, that's kind of been the main topic of conversation at school for the past few days. Um, so the biggest concern is really the amount of screen time in a given day with the combination of streamed classes, afternoon meetings, and having most of the homework assignments being online. Um, students are concerned that the excessive screen time can lead to eye strain and headaches, um, as well as being on Google meets for a long time can tend to take a toll on computer batteries and sometimes wifi as well. Um, students with mental health issues and learning disabilities also have concerns that too much time on the computer will cause difficulties with focusing during the extended class times and the increase in stress levels. Um, I encourage you to read the comments on the change.org petition created by Hall Senior Aaron Broncato to see the student-specific reasons for disliking the plan, but I think you already have read those, but I think most of them are pretty constructive. Um, while I know that hybrid 2.0 is unlikely to change, or it won't change, um, please note that students are feeling very stressed right now and would just like to feel heard by their school and district administration. Um, I think that's, that's the biggest stressor right now. Students kind of feel like they've been ignored, or not ignored, but, um, they would just like to be listened to a little bit better. Um, in other news, the fall sports season ends this week, but some qualifying teams will have the opportunity to participate in postseason playoffs next week. And clubs have continued to meet virtually and host events in new and inventive ways. For example, um, Unified Theater has been meeting most, mostly virtually, but we've also been able to meet in person. It's a pretty large club, but we've been able to meet in person outside with masks and social distancing a few times. And also Link Crew got to host an online trivia night this Monday for ninth graders as a fun virtual event because most of their events have not been able to happen this year. Um, and finally, yesterday, students had the opportunity to participate in a mock election in which they could cast their vote for presidential and congressional candidates, as well as candidates running for state and local offices. The results have yet to be announced, but is a pretty good way for students to practice their civic duty. That's all.
So you guys are in the same boat that we are. You don't know the answer yet.
Exactly.
Funny, it's a national problem and you're having it there at, uh, at the high school. That's.
We, we really made it a true model election for you. You'll get the results when, uh, when we all do too. Great. Thank you very much. Uh, future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Our next three meetings are, um, Tuesday, November 17th, Tuesday, December 1st, and Tuesday, December 15th. Our goal is to be, um, back in our hybrid mode of meeting, which would put us, um, at town hall. And, um, due to the governor's executive order 9H, we will, um, find a spot in town hall, hopefully the auditorium, that will provide at least a little bit of seating for members of the public and media who wish to attend, um, or people can continue to, um, attend online as well. So more to come on exactly where those meetings will be, but our goal is, uh, to be able to meet in a hybrid mode in the town hall auditorium or legislative chambers. Uh, but you can check our website to find out more. Is there, are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, um, are there any visitors on the line who wish to make comments? If so, you can star six and introduce yourself.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't know.
If you could start by giving your name and address, that would be great and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Sure. Um, my name is Tao Hao. I'm at 37 Rosedale Road. Um, I have a kindergartner in the remote school. Um, and I wanted to talk about, um, ongoing problems that we've had with communication. Um, from the start of school, the flow of information and communication from RLE has been insufficient. Um, many of us experienced stress and anxiety, um, over not having any idea how our day-to-day was going to look, um, in order to plan and prepare, who our child's teacher was going to be, or what materials we would be provided with. Many of us attempted to contact the school for answers, what is varying levels of success, often having emails or phone calls completely ignored. Much information I received was via word of mouth or social media. This kind of trickling of, of information can be inaccurate and lead to even more confusion. However, many of us were left with no choice but to look elsewhere for answers. And as the year progresses, communication continues to be a struggle. Website is not as intuitive as it could be and the newsletters that come only once every two weeks often contain critical pieces of information that are buried and easy to miss. There have been several times where technical problems either kept the kids from being able to join their specials or a default from joining a scheduled meeting. Um, as a parent of a kindergarten, kindergartner who is not yet independent, I'm responsible for ensuring that he can log onto class and his app, which adds an extra layer of stress on a parent staying on top of these details. There was no widespread communication from the administration to let families know what was going on. We were once again left to turn to social media to figure things out or just left completely in the dark. All it takes is a very quick mass email with an update to let people know what's going on. I do appreciate that our elementary principal welcomed feedback and has offered a couple of opportunities to meet with parents through the principal coffee and parent teacher council meeting, but we have not seen significant changes despite giving feedback. On the other hand, the district has heard the feedback of hybrid families and has this hybrid 2.0 plan at the secondary level. Why is there this discrepancy on how hybrid and RLE families are being listened to? The remote learning experience handbook states, quote, "No matter how students receive their education, WHPS is dedicated to its mission to inspire and prepare all students. WHPS remains committed to providing its remote learning students with high-quality learning experiences and support," end quote. We have remained patient and understanding of the difficult position that schools are in during this pandemic expedition, but we're coming to the end of the first quarter with so many unresolved issues. One thing I've heard time and again is that the remote learning school is understaffed. There just aren't enough people on board to provide efficient communication and technology support, asynchronous lesson plans, substitute teachers, and a dedicated special teaching staff. The RLE is the largest elementary school in the system, but seems to be lacking in dedicated support to ensure that our children are getting everything that they need to be successful. Uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the call who wishes to provide public comment at this time?
Hi, my name is Blair Hughes and I live at 836 Prospect Avenue. I have students, I have students in both the RLE middle school and the elementary school. Um, and I have a few bullet points that I'm hoping you'll consider tonight about budget, staffing, and accountability in the remote school. Um, in terms of accountability, are there any differences in measuring of progress and performance between the RLE and in-person? Are RLE families, um, concerned about achievement gaps and the widening gap right now? Based on the West Hartford reopening blueprint, how is RLE success being measured? Um, I think there was a mention of public surveys, but we haven't had any of those. Um, and how is the district being held accountable by the state at the end of the year? Um, what are the specific benchmarks? And do RLE parents know that they can opt out of in-person benchmarks and the testing? Um, many likely will based on conditions at the time and, um, what we've heard from the variety of reasons that parents do choose RLE. So if that happens, um, how will that impact West Hartford and the district? Um, in terms of budgeting and staffing, Carrie Jones is the principal of the RLE school and the director of elementary education, if I understand correctly. And this seems like two full-time jobs. Is that feasible or fair to ask Carrie to do both of those at once? Um, there's also only one substitute for the entire RLE elementary school. This has led to several problems with, um, teachers needing coverage. It's, it's just absolutely crazy. Um, why is that largest elementary school in the district not fully staffed, independent of in-person and hybrid schools? Why are their schedules changing our schedule? Would it normally be reasonable to shift Duffy's entire schedule based on a change in Aiken staff? Why is that reasonable for RLE? Especially considering hundreds of families are involved in these schedule shifts and we've crafted complex daily routines around these schedules. Lastly, I'd like to ask a question about budget discrepancies between RLE and hybrid. Um, you've mentioned tonight that the district has been awarded two grants, the COVID-related expend, expenditure grants. Um, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund provided approximately $900,000. Um, what is the breakdown of those funds for in-person and remote? That was meant to, uh, provide adequate staffing for both of those models. Um, and then the Corona relief fund, uh, that granted approximately 1.2 million, I think, to West Hartford. Um, and those funds are being used, I think, for custodial, cleaning supplies, PPE, health and safety, buses, monitoring. Are, are any of those funds being used for the remote school and in what way? Thank you for considering all of these topics tonight.
Thank you. And is there anyone else on the line? Okay. If not, um, we do not have an executive session planned, and so I will, uh, seek a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Mark. Uh, and without further ado, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Good night. Good night.